Married lesbian. I get diversity. I make friends. My whole job, the skill set of what I've been doing for 14 years is understanding people and making good things happen. And I plan on doing the exact same thing, working with all those folks on the council. They're all delightful. I haven't had a chance to get to know Andy that well, but the other three, I've had the privilege of getting to know them, so not a problem.
You know, I can say really from my heart that I've been in office for nearly 21 years, and I've worked harmoniously with every group I have ever been with. In those early days, when we were on the council from 70 to 74, I was in my 30s then. You can picture me then. We did better than we thought we could because we pooled our knowledge. And we came up with some very good things, like the Oak Tree Ordinance and the Hillside Ordinance. You know, and that's the kind of environment I've always been in, whether I was on the city council, the board of supervisors. If I were on the council right now, I think that we would have great harmony. I think I would identify with Councilwoman De La Peña a little more, but that doesn't mean that I would have any difficulty getting along with the other people. I've known them all for many years. I think, I believe in teamwork and working together. You know, if you have a disagreement, it stays in the room. You don't carry it out. We never lobbied each other. Now, I've never had a person on the council or the board of supervisors lobby me in advance of the meeting. I never make up my mind until after all the testimony is in. I have a predisposition right now, to be very wary of housing on the boulevard, but I would not make a final determination until I heard all the, you know, all the testimony. I've read all the information about it. I still, you know, would have that propensity, but I believe in harmony. I believe that's the only way you get things done. And I think we've achieved a lot in Thousand Oaks because of the foundation that some of us slayed back then.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone from the audience? Okay.
I was at one of the planning commission, I was at one of the planning commission meetings last year because I actually live on Los Feliz Drive and where Faith Taupin Apple was. And the planning commission approved luxury housing, and then it went to the city council. They approved luxury housing. There's a lot of luxury housing being approved in the city, and we're talking about senior housing. Why isn't it that you don't work with mini mansions, area housing authorities that have it half for amenity? Because a lot of the apartment complexes on Los Feliz Drive are managed or built by area housing authority or mini mansions. And I guess that would be few. I would just...
What's your question?
I was wondering why, I'm sorry, I was wondering why luxury housing was approved for a developer to come in because people on that street don't want it. And Los Feliz is like, if you've ever read The Women of Brewster's Place, there is that great wall, it's just invisible. And the people, when they found out on the street luxury housing was coming, they did not like it. So I was wondering why that was approved.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you would qualify luxury housing. In the housing world, there's apartments being built all throughout Southern California. Thousand Oaks is one example, many different areas as example. Number one, in terms of redevelopment agency, to try to get something built, I use Rick from Mini Mansions, the most recent project that was approved, it only took 11 years. Yeah, from 11 years, from the amount of time from conception to the building process, the different number of institutions that were involved, it just doesn't happen quickly. The difficulty today for affordable housing, doesn't make any excuse, I'm just saying, it's very, very difficult. As opposed to someone else who might have a property to house 24 units or 30 units or wherever it might be in a particular area, they're going to build something that ultimately they can sell. They have to make it attractive. Some of the design features today, some of the solar, some of the lead designer looks that are used are what people want today. So we should be building various things for different segments of the population, including seniors, including mobile home parks. So every project in real estate has its own set of rules, has its own set of zoning. So there should be, if it needs to be built for seniors, it needs to be built. If it needs to be built for affordable housing, I'd say yes, it does, but we just have to deal with the reality, the redevelopment agency doesn't even exist anymore. And by the way, if you went to the area housing authority and asked them how long it would take to get an apartment, you'll get what I'm saying, it takes a long time. The list, I had a friend that had some difficult times, they don't even want to tell you when there's going to be an opening.
Okay, I'm going to interject something here. I have been for five years the chairman of the senior adult master plan housing team. We have gone to the city council, usually through the council on aging. The council on aging people are not as pushy as I am, okay? And so they frequently say nice things to the city council. When I go, I say, here's what we need. I have been doing this, and my team has been doing this for five years. The fact that we had everybody up here tonight say that we need to do a better job of publicizing what we need to overcome the NIMBYs, I think is our big action program from here on out. We're not going to get affordable housing. We're not going to get another mobile home park if we don't put ourselves out there and justify why we need it. And I think that these four gentlemen better listen to what it is we're saying because if we elect one of you, well, we will elect one of you, you better be ready for us to come to you with strong opinions and strong requests because we're probably not going to just do reports anymore, okay? Who else has a question? Bernie, would you come up and ask yours? There's a gentleman here, come on over.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Give your name.
Sure. Clint Matkovich, lifetime resident of Thousand Oaks. Glad to see everybody here. Just on a personal, a little closer?
Yeah.
Okay. Just on a personal level, I have a question for Mr. McCoy and Mr. Jones. Obviously, both of you ran in an election just a matter of months ago. Mr. Jones ran and was reelected to the park board. Mr. McCoy ran for state office. I, forgive me, I came in a little late, maybe you went over this, but just personally, why are you running now if you just ran for something else entirely differently a few months ago? How do you, I guess for lack of better words, justify running for the council? With all respect, I'm not...
Fair enough. And I did allude to it in the earlier portion of the meeting. I ran for the state assembly to engage more people in the electoral process. And in the course of that, not only to have a macro view of Ventura County, but I got a micro view of Thousand Oaks, a city in which I live and love. Witnessing that we got 21,000 votes in the Thousand Oaks election, 1,500 more than Jackie Irwin, who was a sitting city councilwoman, a number of those folks who invested in that campaign said, would you please pursue this office? And my wife and I, for five weeks, considered it. And as we looked at it, we thought this would be an awesome opportunity to engage more people in a representative form of government, and so we stepped forward in that. If the question is, am I seeking higher office? I commit to the city of Thousand Oaks if I'm honored enough to be elected, not only to finish the 17 months remaining on Jackie's term, but if I am elected for a second term, I'll fulfill the full four years. And I'm also going to seek that anyone who wants to seek higher office must resign from that office so we don't have to pay for these special elections. This is nauseating to me and frustrating. So there you go.
I really feel that we're at a crossroads right now in Thousand Oaks. I really feel that we're starting to head in the wrong direction. We're talking about higher density, we're talking about cutting down oak trees. The planning commission meeting, I keep harping on this, and I will say it once more, that ordinance is called the Oak Tree Protection and Preservation Ordinance. All they talked about was ways to cut down oak trees. I think that we're in a crossroads, and we could be, I think we're starting in the wrong direction, okay? And I'm running because, I mean, I'm 84 years old, it's a 17-month term. I'm in great health, I walk door to door whenever I can, I've walked to a lot of houses. And I'd like to devote this time to getting Thousand Oaks back on course.
Thank you. Okay, Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cindy, I'm a resident, I'm also a member of Gizmo, which is an organization that is basically created to be an advocate and educator for people at mobile homes. There was a questionnaire that the Gizmo Political Action Committee had sent out. Some of you responded, some of you didn't. It was also an opportunity to gather endorsement from Gizmo, and we didn't get any response from you. There were two indicators sent out, a reminder, the original one, no response whatsoever. I'd like to know why there was no response, and also, why would Gizmo want to render an endorsement? Or why would the mobile home community render an endorsement for people that obviously are either too busy or not organized enough to be able to respond to our concerns?
So you want me to reiterate what I shared with you back there?
Please.
Okay. When I ran for the assembly race, I had never run before, and we had a campaign manager who received all of those, and they were not filled out. After the primary, he was no longer our campaign manager. We switched that. I never even saw it. I apologize. If you've ever run an election and it all went perfect, we were assembling the airplane while I was flying. I've never run for office before. Forgive me for not having that done. I take full responsibility. Seeking your endorsement, we basically thought from the outset that every one of these things we filled out, regardless of who it was, because we were a newcomer, nobody was giving us their endorsement. And so we just pursued going door to door to try to elicit response. And it was a bit frustrating at first. We didn't receive any PAC money, we didn't receive any money. It was all citizen donation. And so we focused our efforts where we thought they were best to be focused, and that was the people, door to door. I'm here tonight, I'm here to answer your questions. I do seek your endorsement. We've been answering questions for two hours. We're committed to this, all four of us. So please forgive me that it wasn't filled out, it wasn't intentional.
Thanks. Ed?
Yeah, I have the same thing. Is it too light to turn it in?
You better do it before you're 85. No, we certainly welcome it, it's just that it probably won't be considered for an endorsement because we needed it by the...
Well, I made a phone call last weekend asking if I could have a little more time, and nobody ever phoned me back, so...
Bernie, are you still here? Okay, then I'll ask, I'll ask his question. This is for Dan.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'll get your next. Since you were put on the planning commission by Jackie Irwin, will you be following the same philosophy as Jackie on the city council if elected?
Same philosophy in which category?
I'm not the questioner.
Okay, in terms of one category, using Thousand Oaks City Council to move on to a higher elected office? No, never. I'm not going to Sacramento, and I'm not going to Washington DC. I have no interest in that. My mission is here with you, that's all. So if that's the question for Jackie Irwin?
And I think maybe this person felt that Jackie was more in tune with Andy Fox and Joel Price and business as opposed to citizens and Claudia De La Peña and Al Adams.
Yeah, I think when I was appointed to the planning commission by Jackie Irwin, it was just when the whole appointment issue came up. And quite frankly, I think I was appointed because I didn't represent a particular camp. I never met Jackie Irwin prior to being appointed, other than for coffee and being interviewed. My understanding was that our sons, our two sons, were at a piano recital together once, but traced back, I did not come from a Jackie Irwin camp. I didn't come from an Andy Fox camp. I came from no camp. In fact, I applied with Dr. Tom Glancy to become the planning commissioner and was denied. So I came back and tried it again with a different group. I think the environment changed, I think they needed a safe placement, somebody who didn't represent a camp, and that's how I got here.
Eric, come on.
At least I may have two questions if I may.
All right, that's fine. Your name?
My name, Eric Herem, I live here. I understand that some of the city council members are receiving benefits, fringe benefits, Health for Life, and some are not. It's that task, I think, and I don't know who they are exactly, but in my mind, I think they are. You are aware, if you're elected, that you only get remunerations for the term you're in office. Once you leave office, there's no for life remuneration, like some of the city council are getting that I didn't approve. I won't mention names, you are aware of that. My other question is, you mentioned rain to support more housing or development. We are all under imminent drought situation in California and the Southwest. What would you tell the city council to do because it's imminent? I heard it's only 20% restriction. The governor is talking about 35% control on water. We are seeing gardens watered. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the city-controlled gardening. What are you doing or what will you do to tell the city to show by example what you will do so we may follow? Because the city is not showing example, they're not putting out restrictions. We don't see it in the newspapers, we don't see it on TV, we don't see it anywhere where a city of Thousand Oaks is putting restrictions on water. It's an imminent problem. I think it's very imminent.
Good question, good question. Okay, who wants to answer first? I'll give you a choice. Okay, Ed?
Well, we're doing that with the park board. We got that same notice, Eric, and we've already cut 16% of converting turf to other uses. We're planning to drought tolerant plants, put in wood chips. We're more than halfway there. We were told 25%, I didn't hear 35% before, but we're on the way because we want to conserve water. I mean, we want to be able to have water to drink, right? So that's much more important than putting it on plants. What was your first question? Oh, about benefits? I don't know if you'll believe this, well, I hope you believe it. That's the truth. When I went on the city council in 1970, guess what the salary was and no benefit?
$200.
$50 a month, okay?
Perfect.
While I was on the council for four, perfect, okay, is it went up to 100. You know what? We met every Tuesday night. We met sometimes till 1:00 to 2:00 in the morning. So I'm used to, I didn't get into public office to make buddy, right?
Good point, thank you.
Ed?
Rob, go ahead.
Personally, we collect all of our rainwater at our home. We have cisterns that we collect off of our roof. I love that idea, we water our garden by that. I'd like to see that implemented in some capacity in the city. I'm sad, though, that because the state hasn't implemented any infrastructure for water storage, that we're called on to police one another. In an arid climate, we don't do any water storage. So what the state is unable to do, they're forcing it on us to police one another. That's frustrating to me. I hope Jackie does a good job up there to get us some water storage. Secondly, in regards to lifetime healthcare benefits, I think I saved the city some money because Jackie was one who was a recipient of the lifetime medical benefits, and if she received higher office, she lost them. And so I saved the city some money by losing Jackie.
Okay, Chase?
Okay, I'm not in it for the benefits, I'm running for public service of benefits. I don't even think that's necessary. That's what I work for, to have benefits, and I didn't run for council, I want to be rolling in the dough and benefits. I don't, so... And as far as water, and I think we need, on city properties, have to move more towards drought tolerant plants and things like that, maybe even astroturf. Civic Arts Plaza has greenery, they need to make that more drought resistant, and I believe they have been doing some of that. And then we have the Los Robles Greens, and you know, that's a big green golf course. I mean, you gotta make a tough decision, and if we have to go more drought tolerant over there, then perhaps we'll need to do that.
Dan?
Eric, to answer your first question about benefits, I've been a private practice for almost 33 years. I'm good in that category, I'm not in it for the money. In fact, on the planning commission, we get, I think it's $167 per session, I donate all that money to Mano, okay? So it's not about the money at all. In terms of water, roughly 20 to 30% of your water bill, if you believe the experts, goes to that nice green lawn in the front. The conversion, you'll see it around town, it's happening a lot, drought tolerance, the rocks and so forth. We live in a desert, so that conversion, yeah, it should be a city issue, to send a message that this is what it should look like. So I don't want to say get rid of the green lawn yet, but in the next 30 days, council has already asked staff for specific recommendations so the city can begin implementing this law that came down from Governor Brown. So Eric, you're going to hear about it in the newspaper, probably within the next 30 days, because council will be talking about it. I'd watch TO TV because it is on the agenda.
Okay, gentlemen, Ed, Rob, Chase, Dan, we appreciate you coming tonight, sharing your thoughts with us. Appreciate you taking our questions and that. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate your coming in here tonight, we appreciate your attendance. I hope you found some worthwhile answers, maybe not major pick yet, but perhaps you've got eliminated somebody or something that you want to look for in the future. For those of you who utilized our shuttle service back and forth to your cars, they'll be starting taking people down to their cars and that. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to end this proceeding now. We're sorry we ran a little bit over than what we wanted to, but again, thank you for your patience. Please, follow us up later on.
I have, I have one more thing to say, and I think we have four incredible candidates, and the choice is going to be tough. Thank you all very much.
We passed, we're in effect, those trees never would have come down. We got rid of the whole distinction between whether the tree was planted by an owner or it was planted by a squirrel. When a tree gets big, the tree is what it is. And if it grows up, so we eliminated that from it. The slow degradation of these ordinances, eventually in 2010, was the line that was kind of crossed. That is what's going to be challenged right now. That was long before I went on the council. But what we did on the planning commission is we changed the momentum. Please understand, any piece of legislation is never perfect. That one lasted for 34 years, but slowly began to be degraded. What we did on the planning commission is reverse that momentum backwards.
...kind of thing, that we finally ended up with agreements. And the city manager, the city lawyer, attorney, and the mayor were the two people from the city that were working with us. We were in no way coerced, it was a totally democratic approach, and people on both sides were able to give their statements. But the rent adjustment commission was the primary arbiter prior to this chapter, chapter 25. This will expire in 2021. So it's a 10-year kind of thing, where they made promises to us that this would be enforced till then. So the fear is that, since we have new owners, the fear was that this would change. The city ordinance does not change. Just because the ownership of the park changes, doesn't mean that the city ordinance changes. So the whole idea of negotiating before this expires is what's really important. Because as you say, Mr. McCoy, if the rent, the rent adjustment commission is filled with people who want more, there might not be fairness, okay? And Brenda actually is on that.
I want to bring something up that's probably on the minds of many, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
On the minds of many of us here. With chapter 25, it was decided that there would be a 10-year moratorium on subdivision of a park. Do you recall years ago, the owner of this park proposed subdivision and submitted an application to the city, which was accepted? Okay? And now we're in a 10-year moratorium, but what many of us are concerned about is whether or not that subdivision will go through because the application was accepted. So I think we're asking for help with that.
Yeah, so the real issue is, what will you do to help us when this moratorium ends? And that's what we really want to be able to count on you for. So since you all answered early, why don't we give each of you a chance to respond to that question in one minute? So Mr. Rountree, you want to answer first?
2012, because I didn't come from a camp. I was a safe pick. I didn't have a history of either sign. So conciliatory, I think I would be working wonderful with them because I'm working with them real well right now.
Mr. McCoy?
One of my favorite stories is, we took a trip up to Crescent City to go to the Jedediah Smith campground when my kids were young, and the brakes gave out in our suburban. So I took it into the shop, it was up on the blocks, and I was waiting there because I had no other transportation back to the camp, and there was a lady sitting in the waiting room with her Geo Metro, and it was on the blocks. And we started talking, and she said, I'm a member of the California Teachers Association, I'm liberal, I'm da-da, and she started sharing all these things. And I said, are you, she's from Modesto, how'd you get here? She said, well, I saw the Indian, and they were on a year-to-year contract. It was listed that we fired them, we didn't fire anybody. We were voted Ventura County Star, Reader's Choice Award, Best Pre-School in the East County. They refused to sign the contract, and it was a ministerial exception, and we gave them four years to see if they wanted to be a part of what we were doing. And the insurance companies wanted to settle because they were trying to manage liability. But for us, it was principle. We didn't have anything to gain, it cost us a lot of money to defend it, but it was a principle that we had to stand upon because we purchased the school and we followed the rules, and then we were sued. And we stood our ground instead of letting the insurance companies settle because they're trying to control liability. If it's the right thing to do, sometimes you just go for it. And we did, and we won. And we stood on the right thing, and as far as I'm concerned, protecting our seasoned citizens, yes, I'm standing with you.
Thank you. Chase?
I understand that there was the risk of the city being sued, but that word principle that Pastor McCoy just mentioned, that's, that's something that is very strong with me. I value principle, and if I see a community like this who's saying that they, they do not want something, I could not as a council member, in good conscience, go against their wishes, even at the risk of being sued. Sometimes you just gotta vote on principle, and the chips are going to fall where they may. But we're talking about people's home here. Think about your home, no matter where you live. If someone comes in and makes a change, wants to make a change that is, could possibly be detrimental to you, you're going to want to fight that, and as a council member, I would stand with the people 100% of the time. People come first, not politics, not fear. You can't live in fear.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, the principle, when you're involved in lawsuits and through businesses and other arrangements, I've seen, been on the outskirts of some of these, there isn't a blanket response, okay? Principle, that's where my heart speaks, would say, I'm with you. Stories that I've lived with, with my aunts, my uncles, grandparents, yeah, I'm with them. But it's different when you're talking about citizens' money. When you look at lawsuits today in the millions or the tens of millions of dollars, and you're a public official, you can't just say, I'm behind you 100% because if we lose, then there's $10 billion that the city's going to be owing, and you're responsible for that. The key here is communication, to make sure that thing doesn't get to a lawsuit. Starting early with contracts, I mentioned a little bit earlier, many different lawsuits can be put aside with open communication, and that starts early. Yes, I'm with the seniors, I've told you the story four or five times tonight, but you have to recognize, and I think everyone would agree here, when you are... But you have to recognize, and I think everyone would agree here, when you are a representative of an entire community of 140,000 people, you have to consider all things. And one of them is the fact that if you're wrong and you cost the city $10 million, you could be out of a job, and you could be sued for something that you've done in office. So, it's...every case is a little bit different. I wouldn't want to make a blanket statement. I'd say, from my heart, I'm with you. Okay? But as a city official, you have to take into consideration all facts and circumstances.
Okay. Thank you. Here's another question. Residents do not want more commercial and residential development in Thousand Oaks. Our roads and schools are full. Jobs are not plentiful. And water is in low supply. How can you justify any new development? And I'll start with Mr. McCoy. A minute.
I don't think you can.
All right. Ed, you can have the rest of your time.
No, I agree with that, especially on Thousand Oaks Board.
Okay.
To me, it's the wrong idea and the wrong... What we've planned, you know, Pastor McCoy talks about trees a lot here. You know, if we wanted a 20-foot tree, we'd plant like a flowering apricot or something. If we wanted a 100-foot tree, we'd plant a sycamore, right? Well, we planted a tree for about 140,000 people. Is that a good use of a metaphor? Okay. That's enough shade for 140,000 people, okay? I think we're about where we want to be right now, and especially with the water shortage.
Chase?
I think it is hard to justify more development because the city is built out. There's no denying it. This is a built-out city. The issue is redevelopment, the way buildings that always exist, the way they change. That's where mixed use is going to come in on the boulevard. Though, that's going to be the issue over the next few years, is infill. That's a word that I've been using on the campaign trials, infill. You get businesses changing moving forward into the next century. You get housing changes. But as far as development that is outside of redevelopment and infill, you can't justify that word, "built-out city." And we got to protect our open spaces. And again, the key word is to remember "build-out." You don't even have to look at a city document to realize that. You can look around all on town and see that it's just pretty much built out.
Dan?
Yeah, I would agree with Chase in that the city is maxed out in terms of its capacity. But I'd say the repositioning or the redevelopment, like he said, to be able to address two issues, senior housing and our young people. My son just moved to Atlanta, and he rents a two-bedroom apartment there for $925. That same unit here would be $2,850. There's no place for our young kids to go. So, where are they going? They're leaving. My idea of family is keeping younger people here. As we all age, myself included, we need to have that younger tax base moving in here. But if they don't have $300,000 for a down payment on a house, where are they going to go? They're going to Camarillo, Moore Park, and Seamy Valley because they're providing other housing options. And for seniors, yes, some of those units need to be repositioned. Mixed use is one of those opportunities. So, we don't have the choice, folks. We need to house our families. I'm not talking about making it attractive for people to come in from other areas. I'm talking about housing our current population and our current family. Because if we don't, our grandmas and grandpas are leaving, and our young kids are leaving. And we're going to end up with a three-bedroom, two-bath house with a white picket fence, two dogs and a goldfish, and that's all we have. That was a great model, but we need to look at the future, not how we got here. What got us here is one thing. What's going to keep us successful the next 50 years is a different set of rules. We have to house our current family members, seniors, and our younger folks.
Thank you. Okay. Another question. How do you see yourself fitting in with the current City Council? And I'll start with Chase.
Well, I think I'd fit in well. I, when I start anything new, I usually fit in well. And I ran for council before, and I'll tell you this, every incumbent that was running there, they were very conciliatory, very complimentary, and everything, and very gracious. So, I think that if I was to get elected to there, I would work very well with them, even if there were disagreements. I think I could work very well with them because I recognize each of them has a strength from their profession, and that's where I'd look to work with them, where your strength of your profession and, you know, finding common ground instead of being focused on the disagreements. I'd work towards finding common ground and bringing people together.
Okay. Dan?
Fortunately, I can comment that I already am working with a current council. Roughly 40% of the cases that we work with on the Planning Commission get moved up to the City Council for approval. We do what I call the grunt work. We're kicking the tires, looking under the hood, doing all the field inspections. So, by the time someone gets a plan, they'll have more information. Claudia De La Peña, Al Adams, Andy Fox, Joel Price, I know them all.
Should I answer now? No. I would vote to approve and make sure that it was under rent control.
Okay.
Specific, is this senior housing?
No, this is two new mobile home parks. One could be for seniors, one could be for families. How about that?
For rent control, it has to be senior.
Yeah, I would be in favor for seniors, yes.
Okay. Chase?
Yes, I would be in favor of approval of that.
Dan?
For seniors with some type of rent control, yes. Seniors.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, we have some questions from the audience.
Can we stand up and exercise?
Certainly. Since the time that we had, 99% of the residents voted no, the City Council did not take into account the resident requirement and wishes, and they voted to go ahead with the conversion. But since that time, the state has passed a law that whatever the resident...